And welcome to the May 26, 2020 Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education Meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and recite the pledge? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, just for all. So first on the agenda tonight, we have the budget hearing PowerPoint. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Wiles.
Okay, and what I will do is pull up the PowerPoint and I will be forwarding the slides for Mr. Sanders. So just give me one moment here. All right, Neil, it is all yours.
Okay, thank you, Marie. Good evening. Tonight, we are presenting the budget hearing. This is a requirement of the state, so anytime we have a budget adoption, immediately after that, we do a budget hearing, and that's before the vote. So the timing is typical for what we would do in a typical year. So to start with, we'll look at what the proposed budget is for the 2021 school year. The current year's school budget is just over $102 million. Our proposed budget is $103,032,695. That's an increase of $925,320. And the percentage increase on the budget is a little bit less than 1% at 0.91%. Our tax levy increase and our tax rate increase are the same. They're estimated at this point to be 2.25%. And without assessment data from the towns, which we don't have updates for, that's not atypical to have the tax levy and the tax rate the same percentage. And with this budget, it requires only a 50% voter approval, not a super majority or 60% because we are at the tax low. We are at the limit but not exceeding the limit. Also, part of the requirement is that we present the budget in three parts, and those parts are defined by the state of New York. So we have a program component, we have a capital component, and administrative component. In a moment, we'll talk about what's contained in each one of those categories. But here, in terms of this overall picture, program component is 77.5% of the overall budget. Terms of expenses, the capital component comprises 11.4%, and the administrative component is 11.1%. So first, we will talk about the program component, and this is the instructional part of the budget. You can see the change from the current school year 2019-20 to 2020-21. Next year, this component is 79.8 million, and again, 77.5% of the overall budget. Terms of the instructional component, it's the salary and benefits of teachers, and then all of the support services for instruction, guidance counselors, teacher aides, monitors, nurses, social workers, psychologists, speech therapists, and other like positions. Also in that category is professional development, where we do the training for all of our staff. Library, media, computer services is a component of that. A big one is student transportation, co-curricular activities, and interscholastic athletics is also in this category. Next component is the administrative component, that is going up from 10.9% in the current year to 11.1% next year. This is for the salaries and benefits of administrators, supervisor, and clerical staff that function in the administrative roles. It's also an area where we have funding for public information and central printing, also research, planning, and evaluation, our data processing that's centralized, tax collection, and our legal services, and school board costs are also in this component as well. The final component is the capital component. This one, there's actually a decrease. In the current year, it's 12.5% of the overall budget. That's dropping to 11.4%. We'll talk about that later in the presentation, why that is. But again, to summarize the components in this particular category, this is our debt payments on our buildings, on construction projects that we've done. Also, any school bus purchases would be under this area. Any tax tertiary settlements, so when somebody challenges us, there's an assessment, and there is a reduction in the assessment, that payment would come in this category. And all of our operations and maintenance staff are in this area as well. Next, we'll take a look at the revenue component of the budget. Again, this is a year-to-year comparison between 2019 and 2020-21. You can see in the first line stated in Medicaid, there is a reduction in that category of significance. Majority of that is due to building aid, so we've had some debt for our capital construction projects, improvements to our buildings. We borrowed money to facilitate those improvements, and we're at a point now where some of that debt is rolling off. And this applies to the middle school project when we had at Seneca House and did some other renovations back in 2005. So that debt's rolling off. Also, we do have a reduction in foundation aid this year from the state of New York. The reduction amounts to about $77,650, so that's reflected in that overall year-to-year reduction as well. In terms of local revenues, that is decreasing as well. One of the things in there is interest earnings and interest rates have gone down, so that's a portion of that particular line. Our inter-fund transfers remain the same. For appropriated reserves, we are using more of our reserves or savings to help offset some of the expenditure increases this year. So that's increasing by $300,000. Terms of our appropriated fund balance, and this is money that we've set aside for issues that may arise in the future regarding funding, which is what we do have this year with the uncertainty of the coronavirus. We actually are able to reduce our use of savings to help fund the budget going into next year, so you'll see that reflected from $849,500 down to $638,940. Finally, we have payments in lieu of taxes. That also is a decrease from $259,000 to $74,000. So in total, our tax levy is increasing from $73,338 to $74,990,000. Now we have two pie charts showing our budget of revenues and expenses and how that is allocated. Property taxes on the revenue side are the largest source of revenues at 72.9%. State aid makes up the next largest category at 24.5%. And local sources such as interest earnings and rent and things of that sort are local sources, 2.6% of the overall revenue total. Terms of our expenditures, majority is in salaries and benefits, 79.5%. And this is for our teachers and instructional staff and support staff needed to provide for the educational program for students. Next, we have contractual services at 7.3%, followed by BOSI's services at 5.9%, our debt payments at 4.8%, equipment and supplies are 2.2% of the overall budget, and inter-fund transfers are 0.3%. In terms of the estimated tax impact for next year, we expect the tax levy to increase $1.65 million. That's a 2.25% increase on the tax levy. And as we stated earlier, right now, we're also estimating that same 2.25% for the estimated tax rate increase. Now, we'll talk about the tax levy limit or property tax cap. And just to remind everybody, this is an eight-step formula that has been determined by New York State. The vast majority of expenses are limited to 2% or less in terms of an annual increase. The result of the formula determines the amount that the property taxes can increase, and really what we're trying to get to is a threshold for voter approval, and that whole formula is designed to do that. So if the tax increase is less than the threshold amount, the budget passes with 50% or more of the voters voting yes. And if the tax increase is greater than the threshold amount, budget increases with 60% or more of the voters voting yes. If the budget's defeated, there's no increase in taxes permitted. And again, we're in the, we're at that threshold amount, which is the same as being under that threshold amount. So again, 50% or more of the voters voting yes will result in a pass budget. Terms of the calculation itself, what we're mandated to do is take the prior year tax levy. We get to add a tax-based growth factor, and this is for new construction within our school district, not minor improvements but additional new construction. That rate is 1.0041%. That increases our tax levy to $73.6 million. Then we add our prior year payment in lieu of taxes of $259,280. And we're subtracting out of that capital expenditures and out of state aid. So again, these are our debt payments for both school improvements as well as for the purchase of school buses, which we borrow for. That is subtraction. That gets us our adjusted prior year tax levy of $72.2 million. Now we add in our allowable levy growth factor, and this is the lesser of the Consumer Price Index or 2%. Consumer Price Index for the previous year was under 2%. It was at 1.81%, so we applied the lower amount. It will never be greater than 2%, but if it's less than 2%, you apply the lower percentage, which we've done. That gets us to a growth-adjusted tax levy subtotal of $73.5 million. Then we subtract out next year's payment in lieu of taxes, again, $74,288. That gets us to our true tax levy limit of $73,472,400. And we can get to add back in capital expenditures net of stated for the coming year of just over $1.5 million. That gets us to our maximum allowable tax levy amount, $74,995, and that is 2.25%. To simplify that a little bit in terms of where the tax levy is versus the proposed tax levy, in some years, we're not the same, but this year, we happen to be the same. So our tax levy limit at $74,995 is the same as our proposed tax levy. So there is no difference between those two numbers. Our increase is exactly the same for both at just over $1.65 million or 2.25%. And again, because we are at the tax levy limit, we just need a 50% voter approval to have a pass budget. Next, we'd like to include this chart that goes back and shows six years of budget approval vote margins. You can see that typically, we've had somewhere between 2,000 and 2,600 voters in a typical year. Last year, we had a higher amount, a little over 4,000. That was the year that Gilderlin did the townwide reassessment. We did have a greater voter turnout. You can see our margins, though, have been between 65% and 71% or 75%, excuse me, in that time period. So we have had good voter approval, positive voter approval for our budgets in the past. And on the right side, you can see our projected tax rate change. So we have been typically below 2% in most years, 15, 16, or it's just above 2%. And then last year, because of the reassessment, the tax rate change overall decreased by 28.2%, understanding that assessments did increase in conjunction with that. Also, talk a little bit about contingency budgets and the tax levy limit laws. So if our budget is defeated, presumably twice, it could be defeated once, and then the board would have a decision if it were to be defeated, to either put it up again and try a second time or go right to contingency. If it was put up a second time and it's defeated twice, then there is no choice. You have to go to a contingent budget. So what does that mean, contingent budget? We can't include any new equipment, community use of buildings. They are considered non-contingent expenses and must be removed from the budget. And there's also an administrative budget cap requirement that's meant, so there's some administrative expenses that we would have to reduce as well to comply with the law. Our property tax levy may not increase by any amount over the current year tax levy. So if you look at the third bullet, that's that $1.65 million. So if that were the case, we would have to reduce our budget either in terms of expenses or in a combination with a reduction in expenses in some form of additional revenue. Again, that $1.65 million, we would have to find to be able to have a budget that met the contingency requirements. So for the 2021 school year, just to recap budget vote proposition and Board of Election, our budget proposition is $103,032,695. We do have a bus and equipment proposition for $983,300, and that's to purchase new buses. We have an ongoing replacement program for buses, and we buy somewhere around seven or eight buses each year, phase the old ones out, and continue to have that pattern of taking out older buses and bringing in newer buses over time. We have five candidates vying for five open seats for the Board of Education. Luciano Alonzi, Rebecca Butterfield, Benjamin Goze, Laca Gonzalez Parker, and Judy Slack. Candidates with the three highest vote totals will receive three-year terms. The other two candidates will receive one-year terms. If you want more information, you can go to our website about the budget vote and election. Wanted to also talk a little bit about the budget vote and election process because it is dramatically different this year than it has been in any other year. There will be no in-person voting, and this is per Governor Cuomo's executive order. So the vote can only be conducted by absentee ballot. The district is going to be mailing a postcard detailing, or already did mail a postcard detailing the date of the election, the date of the budget hearing, which is tonight, and the definition of a qualified voter. All qualified voters will receive an absentee ballot with a postage-paid return envelope. Those we expect to be mailed about the 27th, so tomorrow. Hopefully, those will be going out, and they should be arriving in homes in a few days after that. And if a person wants to fill that out, it's postage-paid and could have put it right back in the mail to return to us. And also, as part of the requirements from the governor, board, and library candidates will be listed alphabetically on the ballot, and there was no requirement for a minimum number of signatures. That's typically part of the process. In terms of who will receive a ballot, it's that qualified voter definition. We have a system in our school district, and this isn't the same in every school district, but certain school districts have adopted personal registration. So in order to be qualified to vote, you have to meet the following criteria. You have to be a U.S. citizen, at least 18 years of age. You have to be a resident of the school district for at least 30 days. And the big difference is you have to be registered to vote with the Albany County Board of Elections or the school district. So you meet the three criteria. If you haven't met the fourth criteria in terms of being registered to vote, either with the county or the school district, you are not eligible to receive a ballot for being a qualified voter. If you want to register to vote, and there's still time to do that, you only have a couple of options. Again, with the current pandemic in place, you can contact the Albany County Board of Elections by mail, or you can go remotely through the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles. And on the screen is the web address. Also, if you just go to the New York State Department of Vehicles website, there's instructions there on how to register to vote through their system. Terms of the voting timeline and instructions, so as I mentioned, ballots and a budget postcard we expect to be mailed hopefully tomorrow, so they should start arriving in homes on or about June 1st. The ballots must be returned no later than 5:00 p.m. on June 9th to be counted. You can use, you can return them by mail using the enclosed postage-paid envelope. There are instructions with completing an absentee ballot, so make sure you follow those. You have to sign your name, you have to certify, so make sure before you return it that you follow those, all the instructions, so that you have a valid ballot. We do have a Dropbox that's going to be available at the district offices, which is located on the high school campus, West Drive entrance, and that will be available from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. weekdays only. That's prior to June 9th, and from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on the date of the vote, June And then we again urge you to vote. The vote date, again, Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, and that is the deadline for receiving absentee ballots. We must have them by 5:00 o'clock in order for them to be counted. And if you want to see, if you're registered, we do provide you with a link at the bottom that you can see, go onto and see if you're a registered voter, and that'll tell you if you're registered to receive an absentee ballot or not, so you can do that ahead of time. And that concludes the presentation. Open to any questions?
I have a question. What pilots dropped out that it went from, I think it was $84,000 this year, and last year, we had like $274,000?
That was a, I'll say, a casualty of the reassessment process. So we have to get assessment information before assessments are fully finalized. There's an appeal process and so on, but we need to have our budgets adopted before all of that takes place. So it was a commercial enterprise where the assessment had been increased as part of the reassessment process. They challenged the reassessment. They were successful, so, but that did not occur within the timeframe in which we had to adopt the budget. So we had to go with the information that we had at the time, which was the higher assessment. It since got lowered, so now we have to carry that lower assessment going forward. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Dr. Wiles, I think you said we had one public comment?
Yes, we received one comment. This is from Melinda Person, and it's actually a resolution in support of state and federal support for public schools. So I'm going to read the resolution, and the board will have an opportunity to consider it at another point. So this is a resolution in support of state and federal support for public schools to prevent the COVID-19 shutdown from damaging education in New York State. Whereas, New York State has reported a $13 billion budget deficit, which has been exacerbated by declining state revenues due to the COVID-19 crisis. Whereas, states need significant support from the federal government to help ensure the immediate continuation of important and essential services such as public education. Whereas, the federal-state partnership is the linchpin to responding and recovering from the COVID-19 crisis. Whereas, the state has the primary responsibility to fund public education. Whereas, Article 11, Section 1 of the New York State Constitution provides that, quote, "The legislature shall provide for the maintenance and support of a system of free common schools wherein all the children of the state may be educated," unquote. Whereas, state courts have upheld that the state has the legal responsibility to provide proper funding for public schools. Whereas, the state on average provides less than 40% of the total revenues to school districts. Whereas, public school districts are owed over $3.8 billion in foundation aid for the 2020-2021 school year. Whereas, the legislature is considering multiple proposals that will raise much-needed revenue for New York State, including taxes on billionaires and multimillionaires. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gilderlin Central School District requests that the elected leaders in the state of New York act to preserve education programs and related jobs to ensure that the COVID-19 crisis does not damage the quality of public education in our state. Resolve further that the Gilderlin Central School District urges the state legislature to act and immediately pass legislation that will increase revenue before the end of this legislative session. And resolve further that we must request the federal government to provide additional support to public education to assist states that have been, that have had revenue losses due to the COVID-19 crisis.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next on the agenda is consent items, but before we get to consent items, we're going to move up an agenda item from Action, Superintendent Action, letter A, the MOA.
Thank you, Seema. So yes, we would like to bring to the board for consideration the approval of a memorandum of agreement between the Gilderlin Central School District and the Gilderlin Teachers Association, which waives the February 1st deadline for submitting a letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement and moving it to June 1st, 2020, for this year only.
Can I have a motion to pass the MOA with the GTA? So moved. Barbara, second, Ben. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass at 7-0. Thank you. And we'll go back up to consent items. I need a motion to accept the consent items. They include the minutes of the May 12, 2020 meeting, the May 18, 2020 meeting, the CPSC and CSC recommendations, the personnel action, textbooks, and financials from April 30th and March 31st. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Gloria? It's a second. Rebecca? Any questions or comments?
I just want to bring to everyone's attention that in that action, we now have a new Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics, David Austin, who comes to us from the Mahanis and Central School District, and will have the honor of trying to fill Reagan Johnson's shoes.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass at 7-0. Thank you. Next on the agenda, information items, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Singleton?
Thank you. I'd like to start by extending congratulations to Gilderlin High School art teacher, Tom Piego. Tom submitted a grant application to the National Art Education Association Technology Group and has been awarded $2,500. The grant money will be used to purchase a Glowforge 3D laser printer, which will be housed at the Innovation Lab at Farnsworth Middle School. And for my second item, I'm very pleased to share with you that Rayjean Teeter, Gilderlin High School music teacher, recently assembled a collection of current and former chamber choir students to record remotely a version of "Over the Rainbow." The link is there for you, but Dr. Wiles and I felt that it was worthy of sharing with you and the community, so if you can humor me for a minute, I'm actually going to try to play this for you. So let me just share my screen. So let me just share my screen. But my computer is now frozen.
That was beautiful.
Yes, well, I hope you enjoyed it. It was definitely a bit of a, an uplifting piece. And I do want to just thank again Ray Jean Teeter for the great collaboration with current and former chamber choir students. They remain very active. Our art and music teachers are still very active with their students. So thank you to Mrs. Teeter for such great work.
I told you needed tissues. Did we lose Seema?
I think she's back. I'll put her back. Sorry, thank you, Damian, that was awesome. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Damian. So next on the agenda, we have Board President information. There is a set of policies to review. Section A and B for sexual harassment. And so you can review those and they'll be up for action next time. Letter B, we have the upcoming Board of Education election, like Neil mentioned earlier tonight. Just read this, the deadline for the Board of Education candidates to self-nominate was on Monday, May 11th. There are three three-year terms on the board that will begin July 1st, 2020, and two one-year plus three-week terms on the board that begin on June 10th, 2020. And the name of the candidates will appear alphabetically in the ballot as follows. Luciano Alonzi, Rebecca Butterfield, Benjamin Goze, Blanca Gonzalez Parker, and Judy Slack. Candidates do not run for a specific seat on the board. The individuals with the five highest vote totals will be elected. The lowest will have the one-year terms and they'll begin their term on June 10th. And the three-year term begins July 1st, 2020, to June 2023. Three-year term will run from June 10th. The three one-year, the one, sorry, the one-year term will run from June 10th, 2020, to June 30th, 2021. So nothing has changed there. And lastly, the voter registration required for the June 9th election. Like Neil mentioned earlier, the public vote will begin, will be held on Tuesday, June 9th. This year will be different. It will be by absentee ballot only. Neil went over the requirements to be a registered voter in the district. So you need to be registered either with the Albany County Board of Elections or through the DMV or through the district. And the district will be sending out ballots to qualified voters in the next few days. And next we have action items. First, we have school business, Neil. Do we have Neil?
I think he's muted.
Sorry about that. It was lovely what I said, too. Two agreements to accept students for internship or practicum experience. One is with the Sage Colleges and the second is with Utica College.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the two agreements?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
I. Passes seven zero.
Next is an engagement letter confirming the understanding of auditing services to be provided by Weston Company for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Can I have a motion to accept the agreement with Weston Company?
So moved.
So moved.
Ben, second?
Rebecca.
Rebecca, any questions or comments? Now all in favor?
Hi.
I pass the seven zero.
And then my final item this evening is a general fund transfer from workers' compensation to teaching in the amount of $76,544.
Can I have a motion to accept the fund transfer?
So moved.
Regan, second? Gloria, all in favor, or I'm sorry, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
I, motion carries seven zero. Next on the agenda, Superintendent Action, Dr. Wiles?
Thank you, Seema. We already did Letter A earlier, so I'll move on to Letter B, which is a memorandum of agreement between the Gilderland Central School District and the Gilderland Office Workers Association. And this MOA helps to clarify the level of the Personnel Assistant 1 title to, clarifies the Personnel Assistant title to the right level and eliminates some titles that we no longer use in the district.
So can I have a motion to accept the MOA with the Gilderland Office Workers Association?
So moved.
Barbara, second? Gloria, any questions? All in favor? I. Pass the seven zero.
And my final item tonight is a resolution to amend the 2019-2020 school year. That is the school year we're currently in. And I'll just read the resolution. It is hereby resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the school calendar previously adopted by the Board of Education for 2019-2020 is hereby amended as may be necessary and implemented by the superintendent of schools to comply with all existing and to be issued executive orders issued by the Governor of the state of New York that impact the school year or the operation of schools in any manner.
Can I have a motion to pass the calendar resolution?
So moved.
Rebecca, second? Gloria? All in favor?
Hi.
I. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next on the agenda, we have Board President Action. The first item is the adoption of the proposed amended calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. And I will read the proposed change here. The proposed amended 2020-2021 school calendar is attached. The March Superintendent's Conference Day has been moved to September 1st, 2020. This calendar was presented for review at the May 12th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 school calendar?
So moved.
Judy, second Gloria? Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
I pass the seven zero. Next, we have a proposed change to the Board of Education meeting date. And I'll read the change. The Board of Education will vote on moving the regularly scheduled meeting from June 9th, 2020, to June 16th, 2020. The budget vote and election will take place on June 9th, 2020, which was changed via Executive Order Number 202.26 on May 1st, 2020. So we're changing it to June 16th to accommodate for the vote. Can I have a motion to accept the proposed change?
So moved, hi.
Rebecca, second Kellin? Any questions or comments?
Neil, we're not counting any ballots on June 9th, right?
Correct, we are not.
So is any work being done by DOT on June 9th in the evening that would prevent us from meeting?
I think the idea was that we normally at that meeting would have the results from the budget vote to share and we won't have them for that meeting. So moving it off a week allows us to have the results of the budget vote and election.
All in favor?
Hi.
My motion carries seven zero. Next, we have the appointment of election workers for the June 9th, 2020 budget vote and election. We recommend the appointment of the following individuals to serve as election workers for the June 9th, 2020 budget vote and elections. And we see the list of individuals on the document here. Can I have a motion to accept the appointment of election workers?
So moved.
Barbara, second?
Don't move.
Judy, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
I. Pass the seven zero. So we'll move down to Board Committee Reports and we'll start with Business Practices.
Oh, I'm sorry, there, we haven't had a meeting and we don't have one scheduled.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Next, Policy, Barb?
We have a meeting tomorrow at 3:00.
Next, Communications?
We have not met yet. We do have a meeting scheduled for this week.
Thank you, Ben. And lastly, the Audit Committee?
Again, we haven't met, but we have a meeting scheduled for this week.
Thank you, Ben. Next, Public Comment Number 2. Did anybody else email, Linda or Dr. Wiles?
Let me check, I don't think so.
I didn't get anything.
No.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, Board Issues, Ideas and Sharing. We'll open it up if anybody has any comments or questions.
I have a question. When is our meeting, Ben?
For Communications?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have a meeting. I was thinking.
It was supposed to be, it was last week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other ideas or sharing issues?
Seema, I have a, I just have a concern. I know Assemblyman Santa Barbara was on a number of news programs, basically asking the governor, governor not to have a one-size-fits-all school closure for the summer. He pointed out that our, you know, special needs students have been out about eight weeks. Many of them are hands-on therapies. And over the course of the summer, there'll be another eight weeks. That would be a total of 16 weeks that this very needy group of children will be denied, you know, the bulk of their services. I know, you know, they've received some over the internet. But with our buildings basically being an empty, even if you do the social distancing, it certainly seems like it would be a possibility, you know, to continue these or have these programs for this group of students for the summer. So I don't know if anybody else had any thoughts that, you know, that we could lobby the governor or whatever. But there's a great need for these kids to have their services over the summer. And as I said, the edict is one-size-fits-all. You can, you know, you can do the distance learning. But when you talk to a lot of these parents, I mean, they're desperate.
Gloria muted. Does this include our English language learners? Because they always had a summer support program as well. So that's included in that group.
Yeah, I would love to see that possibly, absolutely.
Yeah, because they're losing. I know Barbie and I talked about they normally have that extended school year. And if you look at the population of, or the number of those students compared to the whole population, it's not, you know, that many. So among seven buildings, you know, we talked about this, why, you know, can it not be spaced out or, you know, appointments? Or however, it could be coordinated so people could still follow social distancing and follow through because, you know, you can't really do PT through the phone or OT or speech.
So Barbara, are you looking just that we should write the governor or petition the governor? Because we really can't do anything until, you know, if it's one, you know, if we're closed, we're closed. And I don't, I don't see what your suggestion is, is all. I would just love to see, you know, a letter from my superintendent on behalf of the board saying, you know, please reconsider this one-size-fits-all and, you know, share the needs of these various groups of kids and stress the fact that, you know, 16 weeks, you know, for these students is a nightmare to not have services. And it's certainly under even the most strictest guidelines would certainly be achievable over, at least over the course of the summer.
Barb, just in terms of legislative advocacy, Pat Fahey had an editorial this weekend in the Times Union about this very issue and about the expected sort of summer slide, which will be exacerbated for these post-needy students. So that might be an avenue to go as well.
Yeah. I mean, even letters to the editor, as long as people become aware that this is really a dire problem.
Well, Barbara, I'm happy to write a letter and to Pat Fahey as well. I will also bring this to the larger group of superintendents because it's a lot more effective to have many voices than just one. And so I'm happy to do that. We meet tomorrow morning at 9:00.
Oh, good timing then. Perfect.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. Barb, I've seen things, you know, like from news about it, but I haven't really seen much like advocating for it through news. I don't know, maybe we could also write as a board collectively. I'm sure we're not the only ones who are thinking about this. But like you said, power in numbers.
Exactly.
The whole state.
Yeah, I had known about Santa Barbara, but I hadn't known about Pat Fahey. So, you know, maybe there are others that have already, you know, tried to reach his ear.
Can only try.
So Marie, you'll bring it to the superintendents. But what about a letter from our board or from Marie?
You know. I can do both, Barbara. I can draft a letter on behalf of the board if you'd like and have you folks take a look at it. And when you're happy with it, I can send it out. But I, but I do think there's more power in numbers. And perhaps it's even a joint letter from the region may have even more impact. So I'm happy to explore this.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other Board Issues, Ideas or Sharing? So I'll have a motion to adjourn, please?
Well.
Barbara?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I pass the seven zero. Thank you.
All right, have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.